The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley.
Present.
Alderwoman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderwoman Iggracia.
Present.
Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Laffey. Alderman Stevens.
Here.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Present.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green.
Present.
Alderman Odenberg.
Present.
Alderwoman Peel.
Present.
Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderwoman Davis.
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker.
Present.
Alderman Bacaro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Con.
Present.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Grass.
Here.
President Ballmer.
Present.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Colder. Alderman Laffey. Woman Howard.
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys.
Here.
Twenty-four, present, you have Quorum.
Thank you very much, Sharita. Hey, Quorum, being present, we will be led in prayer this morning by the Reverend Roy Hubbard of the New City South Church, thirty-five oh-two Grace Avenue. Reverend Hubbard, please lead us in prayer.
Yep. Glad to be here with y'all today. Thanks for inviting me. So let's go to the Lord and the word of prayer. Jesus, we thank you for the stay and we thank you, God, that you care about this world, you care about the state, and you care about St. Louis, and you care about our communities. God, thank you for being a God of love, a God of equity, a God of justice. And you, God, have placed these, all the women and all their men in their communities, in the places to represent the interests of their people. Lord, would you give them wisdom? Would you give them guidance? Would you give them ears to hear the concerns, the worries, but also the joys expressed by people in the communities that they serve? God, be good to us. God, help us all, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for joining us. All right. Introduction of Honor Guest. I'm sorry, we'll dispense with line item three. Introduction of Honor Guest. And we have Oliver from twenty-third.
As always, I'd like to have my good friend Greg Meyer as my honored guest.
All right. Thank you. Welcome, Greg. All right, Oliver from twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd just like to have as my honor guest all of the many organizations, entities, and people along with ourself here at the Board of Aldermen standing in solidarity and unity with survivors, not only survivors of domestic violence, but people that are fighting through domestic violence right now and wearing our purple. So if you have your purple on and you don't have your camera on, please turn it on and show the city of St. Louis how we're standing with them. Let me tell you, so many entities came through with this, the Community Violence Awareness Alliance, and Diva, YWCA, of course, the work they do all the time. Mayor Jones, Treasure Line had on their purple. Shout out to our good friend, Mr. Haas with the Carpenters Union. They lit the Carpenters Union up in purple. Shout out to our former colleague, Alderwoman Morton. Her work made the Electrical Union light up in purple. Our former colleague, Alderman Villa, lit a Villa Lighting in purple. The wheel was in purple. I'm gonna probably get in trouble because I know I'm forgetting somebody. SLMPD lit up in purple, North Patrol, SLFD, our fire department, lit up their headquarters in purple. It's just bigger than the than purple because everybody knows that's my favorite color. But I want to make sure that we send a strong message that we are not only fighting against to try to end domestic violence, but we're fighting with people that are still going through domestic violence as we speak right now. So thank you, Mr. President, because you know, it says a lot to me. I don't want to get out of rules right now, but
All right.
letting me announce that we are standing in solidarity to end domestic violence. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Oliver from the twenty-first, you're recognized.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the board. As my honored guest this morning posthumously, I'd like to speak the name of my mother, Harriet Lee Henderson McElran, who is a survivor of domestic violence. Additionally, I would like, as an honored guest, a brand-new author who also is from the twenty-first ward. She is a domestic violence survivor, and her name is Yvonne Woodson, and she will be joining me tomorrow at my first town hall meeting to sign her book. So thank you all so much.
All right. Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman from the fourth, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My honored guest this morning is my niece, Rachel Evans. She is graduating from Flight Attendant Class at ten-thirty this morning. So I'd like to congratulate her. Kudos for her. Thank you.
All right. Congratulations. All right. Thank you. Any other hands? I don't see no other hands. We will move to line item five. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes dated October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Oliver from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve our meeting minutes.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by the Oliver from the twenty-fifth, seconded by the Oliver from the fourth, that we approve the minutes of the October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Aldermen's mailboxes. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the Euclid South Community Improvement District. The appointment of Mr. John Beatty. The reappointment of Mr. Brian Davies. The reappointment of Mr. Brian Phillips. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment sincerely to Shara O. Jones, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Sharita. Oliver from the seventeenth, you are recognized on the mayor's appointment to the Euclid South Community Improvement District.
Great, thanks. Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I move to approve the appointments of the Euclid South Community Improvement District members.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by the Oliver from the seventeenth, seconded by the Oliver from the twenty-fifth, that we approve the mayor's appointment to the Euclid South Community Improvement District. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. The ayes have it and the motion carries. All right. We'll dispense with line item seven. Board bills for perfection and informal calendar. Would anybody like to take any board bills off any of our informal calendars? Any board bills or resolutions off for any of our informal calendars?
Mr. President. Yes. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to remove board bills eighty-nine and ninety to the regular third reading calendar, please.
All right. Sharita, please make note of that.
No noting.
All right. Any other one? No one else? Okay. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill. Board Bill one-zero-four sponsored by Alderwoman Walker. An ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two for the thirty-four zero-one Goodfellow Boulevard area. Board Bill one-zero-five sponsored by Alderwoman Iggracia. An ordinance recommended by the City of St. Louis pertaining to signage plan overlay districts established in the St. Louis City SC Stadium Area Signage Plan Overlay District, providing definitions and findings pertaining to said district, further providing signage control regulations for said district, and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one-zero-six sponsored by Alderman Bacaro. And, I'm sorry, pursuant to ordinance number seven-zero-three-three-three as amended by ordinance number seven-one-three-nine-four, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the sixty-six-hundred block of Filer Avenue between the intersections of Filer Avenue and Ivanhoe Avenue and Filer Avenue and Watson Road, and on the sixty-two through the sixty-three-hundred block of Arthur Avenue between the intersections of Arthur Avenue and Watson Road and Arthur Avenue and Hampton Avenue. Board Bill one-zero-seven sponsored by Alderman Con and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estmen and Aportment, authorized and directing the director of airports and the control of City of St. Louis to enter into and execute on behalf of the city the second amended and restated concession agreement with TACE Inc. granting the non-exclusive right, license, and privilege to operate a food and beverage concession at the airport, containing severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill one-zero-eight sponsored by Alderwoman Iggracia and Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two for the two-zero-one-one through twenty-one-twenty-five Locust Street and twenty-one-zero-six through twenty-one-twenty-eight Washington Boulevard area. Board Bill one-zero-nine sponsored by Alderman Grass, an ordinance to repeal ordinance number six-nine-zero-five-six concerning the city's participation in the Property Assessment Clean Energy Act and enacting a new ordinance regarding the same to enable the city to join the Missouri Clean Energy District in order to provide an additional authorized entity through which owners of property within the city may obtain financing for energy efficiency improvements or renewable energy improvements to their property pursuant to Missouri Property, Missouri's Property Assessment Clean Energy Act, Missouri revised statutes sixty-seven-point-two-eight-zero-zero to sixty-seven-point-two-eight-three-five, and stating the steps to be taken by the city in connection therewith and the activities such district may conduct in the city as a member of such district. Board Bill one-ten sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard pursuant to ordinance number seven-zero-three-three-three as amended by ordinance number seven-one-three-nine-four, and ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the fifty-eight-hundred block, fifty-nine-hundred block, and six-thousand blocks of Warmer Avenue between the intersection of Warmer Avenue and Goodfellow Avenue and Warmer Avenue and Holdomah Avenue and on the three-hundred, four-hundred, five-hundred, and six-hundred blocks of Clara Avenue between the intersection of Clara Avenue and Persian Avenue and Clara Avenue and Dalemore Boulevard. That's the extent of first reading of board bills.
Thank you, Sharita. Reference to committee.
To the HUSS Committee, Board Bill one-zero-four, one-zero-five, and one-zero-eight. To the Streets Committee, Board Bill one-zero-six, one-ten. To the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill one-zero-seven, and to the Parks Committee, Board Bill one-zero, I'm sorry, one-zero-nine. That's the extent of reference to committee.
All right. Second reading report of standing committees.
The following board bills were reported out of the Transit and Commerce Committee with the DuPont's recommendation. Board Bill ninety-seven sponsored by Alderman Con, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estmen and Aportment, authorizing and directing the director of airports and the control of City of St. Louis to enter into and execute on behalf of the city and the second amendment to the Airport Use and Lease Agreement, and when applicable, the AUA with cargo addendum between the city and certain signatory airlines that was authorized by the City Ordinance Number seven-zero-two-seven-three, approved May twenty-fifth, twenty-sixteen. And City Ordinance Number seven-one-two-nine-five, approved December the eleventh, twenty-twenty, contain a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill ninety-eight sponsored by Alderman Con, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estmen and Aportment, authorizing and directing the director of airports and the control of City of St. Louis to enter into and execute on behalf of the city, the seventh third amendments to the on-airport passenger vehicle rental concession agreements at St. Louis Lambert International Airport with concessionaires, amending the on-airport PBR concession agreements as previously amended, which third amendments were approved by the Airport Commission, contain the severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill ninety-nine sponsored by Alderman Con, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estmen and Aportment, authorizing and directing the director of airports and the control of the City of St. Louis, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airports, entering to and execute on behalf of the city, the first amendment to concession agreement AL-two-one-four between the city and HD St. Louis JV, doing business as take-on-the-go dated December twenty-first, twenty-fifteen, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill one-zero-two sponsored by Alderman Con, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Aportment, authorizing and directing the issuance establishment of terms, negotiated sales of airport revenue bonds not to exceed one-hundred-and-fifty million to finance the cost of purchasing, extension, improvement, or enlargement of the airport, providing for the funding of any required debt service reserve funds and for the payment of cost of issuance, appointing a trustee approving the form of an indenture and authorizing the preparation, execution, and delivery of such documents and actions or as necessary or appropriate, repealing inconsistent prior ordinance provisions and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill ninety, I'm sorry, the following board bill was reported out of HUSS with the DuPont's recommendation. Board Bill ninety-four sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook. An ordinance authorizing execution of a transportation project agreement relating to the Lighthouse-St. Louis Transportation Development District and contain a severability clause. The following board bill was reported out of Ways and Means with the DuPont's recommendation. Board Bill ninety-five sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook. An ordinance approving a petition to establish the Lighthouse Community Improvement District, established in the Lighthouse-St. Louis CID as political subdivision of the State of Missouri, approving appointment of the initial board of directors and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. That's the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
Thank you, Sharita. Take a drink of water. There you go. We'll dispense with line item fourteen. Perfection consent.
Board Bill ninety-one sponsored by Alderman Odenberg, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderman Orion, Alderman Page, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, and Alderman Bacaro. An ordinance to revise section fifteen of ordinance number seven-one-one-two-three concerning the transportation and disposal of waste cars codified in chapter one-one-point-seven-zero-point-one-five-zero of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis, delete section thirteen-B of ordinance number five-nine-one-two-one codified in chapter one-one-point-zero-two-point-three-seven-five and revise section thirteen-A of ordinance number five-nine-one-two-one to increase the penalties for violations of chapter eleven-point-zero-two and revise section three of ordinance number six-two-three-three-zero codified in chapter one-five-point-eight-zero-point-zero-two-zero of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis. Board Bill ninety-two sponsored by Alderman Odenberg, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderman Orion, Alderman Page, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, and Alderman Bacaro. An ordinance revising section one of ordinance number six-nine-two-seven codified in chapter one-one-point-eight-five-point-zero-two-zero concerning disposal of waste of your waste in city-owned your waste container by a private lawn service to ensure private lawn services are only disposing of your waste in city-owned your waste containers from a private residence located, resident located on the block where the container is located. That's the extent of perfection consent calendar.
All right. You have some very wordy board bills here for you today. Okay. Board bills for perfection.
Uh, we have to adopt the perfection consent calendar.
Well, that's, well, I'll have to talk to my chief of staff. He's on my page. All right. Oliver from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized on the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt our perfection consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Oliver from the twenty-fifth, seconded by Oliver from the fourteenth, that we adopt a perfection consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Your vote, you've adopted perfection consent calendar. Line item sixteen, board bills for perfection.
Board Bill one-zero-one as amended sponsored by Alderwoman Davis. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Aportment, authorizing the mayor and the controller to enter into and execute agreements with the hood for the receipt of the twenty-two, the twenty-twenty-three Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership, Emergency Solutions Grant, and Housing Opportunities for Person with AIDS Funds, authorizing the director of the Community Development Administration, Department of Human Services, and the Department of Health to execute contracts as may be necessary to expand funds and contain an emergency clause.
All right. Thank you. Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you are recognized on perfection board bill one-on-one as amended.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to make a motion to adopt board bill one-on-one as we
As amended?
As amended. That's what I was trying to catch there, as amended.
All right. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the nineteenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the fourteenth. We, any discussion? Please proceed.
Uh, thank you very much. This is our regular order of business in order to follow the guidelines of the Housing and Urban Development Agency. The requirements that are used for us to be able to receive the dollars that have been appropriated for us to use on behalf of the citizenry of the City of St. Louis. This process is, uh, is time-sensitive every year, and I appreciate the fact that we are moving appropriately so and ask for your favorable approval. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none? It's been moved, the second we perfect board bill one-on-one as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, then the motion passes. Third reading consent.
Board Bill seventy-one and seventy-two.
All right. Oliver from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt the third reading consent calendar.
I'll second that.
All right. It's been moved by Oliver from the twenty-fifth, seconded by Oliver from the twenty-third, that we adopt the third reading consent calendar. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Iggracia.
Aye.
Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Laffey.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Keys. Twenty-five, aye votes.
All right. By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth. Third read and finally pass your aforementioned board bills. Third reading and final passage.
Board Bill sixty-two sponsored by Alderman Stevens pursuant to ordinance number seven-zero-three-three-three as amended by ordinance number seven-one-three-nine-four, and ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the fifty-seven-hundred block of Minus Avenue between the intersection of Minus Avenue and Hampton Avenue Avenue and Minus Avenue and Macklin Avenue, thirty-eight-hundred and thirty-nine-hundred blocks of Lewis Avenue between the intersection of Lewis Avenue and Sharp Avenue and Lewis Avenue and Upton Street, and the seventy-three-hundred block of Field Avenue between the intersections of Field Avenue and Germania and Field Avenue and Laughlawn Avenue.
All right. Thank you. Alderwoman from the twelve, you're recognized on third reading and final passage of board bill number sixty-two.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry, I had to turn up my tablet. Um, I would like, I motion that we third read and finally pass board bill sixty-two.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Oliver from the twelve, seconded by Oliver from the eighth, that we finally pass board bill sixty-two. Any further discussion? All right. No, sorry. Alderwoman from the twelve, you're recognized to close.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I renew my motions.
All right. It's been moved, the second we third read and finally pass board bill sixty-two. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Previous roll. Previous roll.
Objection.
We have an objection.
Objection.
Call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Iggracia.
Aye.
Alderman Colder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther. Alderman Laffey.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye. Aye.
Alderman Grass.
All right.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Keys. Twenty-five, aye votes.
All right.
I'm sorry, Bosley's an aye as well.
Twenty-six, aye votes.
All right. Thank you. By your vote, we've third read and finally passed board bill sixty-two.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Take your time.
Board Bill eighty-eight sponsored by Alderwoman Rice, an ordinance approving the petition of owners of real property seeking the creation, extension, renewal, and establishment of the Floor Place Community Improvement District, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause.
All right. Alderwoman from the eighth, you are recognized on the third reading and the final passage of board bill number eighty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move, we third read and finally pass board bill eighty-eight.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Oliver from the eighth, seconded by Oliver from the twenty-fifth, that we, uh, third read and finally pass board bill eighty-eight. Any discussion? Would you like, we have some hands up. We'll take those first. Alderwoman. Alderwoman from the twelfth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As I have done with a previous, recent Sid bill, competing community improvement district bill, I should say. As I work with the city council's office and the state auditor's recommendations, it strikes me as a personal ethic, ethical boundary for myself, so I'll be abstaining from this vote since I'm looking into various aspects of our Sid system. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman from the sixteenth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. It is a great day in St. Louis. I rise in full support of this board bill, which renews a special taxing district for about six blocks, I believe. which renews uh a special taxing district for about six blocks, I believe, of homes on Flora Place that range from the high three hundred thousand dollars of net worth to uh just shy of a million. This is also a great day because we are witnessing a trend. Now, this trend is a retreat from progressive politics as it pertains to anti-policing, the defund the police movement, the reimagine, do more with less cops movements that we've seen throughout our city. Now, a few months back, we saw a member of the flip the board movement bring a special taxing district for the majority of the use of public safety. Now, we have heard and will likely hear that this is a majority of programming uses, uh, anti-erosion, flowers, weeds, uh, Halloween parties, um, and fellowship of neighborhood events. But rest assured, a majority of these funds, it is important that this is public, a majority, a large majority of these funds are for public safety. The hiring of private security or secondary officers to protect citizens. Citizens who, by the way, have witnessed since two thousand seventeen, eight hundred police officers leave this force in the city. Now, there's lots to that trend as well, but we had testimony from the St. Louis Police Office Association that a majority of those vacancies are a result of lack of pay. Pay that's not commensurate in other municipalities. Also, an overwhelming lack of support from political leadership to police. So, with a most of these, a majority of these revenues, a perennial source, um, being captured for public safety, I say bully this bill and bully where these come in the future. Because we will not see it unless we do it ourselves, we will not see public safety. And the irony, I don't think it's irony, I think it's a trend, actually. The trend is not lost on me that we've had very progressive members of this board seek private public safety protection through the use of these taxing districts. It goes further. I think everyone knows Sunshine Jerry. This is uh our local gadfly who is uh very, very watchdog and hawkish on all special taxing districts uh and never really misses a public hearing as it pertains to special taxing taxing districts, Sid, the others. Making sure that there's going to be compliance, the proper board composition. I love citizens like this, I think we all can embrace a citizen like that. Everyone knows who I'm talking about when I talk about Sunshine Jerry. He's great, he keeps everybody on their toes. He was completely absent on this special taxing district. I almost thought the man was sick, I was ready to call the fire department. So, I don't know if there's irony involved in that. Uh, I think he's a member of the eighth ward and maybe a ma- a resident of the Shaw neighborhood or I don't know if he lives on floor and he's seeking protection through this taxing district as well. Uh, I don't know, I don't know. So, but I do find it particularly curious and I think this is a day to celebrate that we're seeing a trend. We're seeing the reversal and a retreat of an anti-police movement because at the end of the day, folks want protection and they're gonna do it themselves. So, I'm glad to see that this board will embrace this type of a taxing district for police protection. It's a great way to start the weekend, I'm in full support of it, I thank the sponsor for bringing it. I have nothing further, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the thirteenth, you have your hand up.
Thank you so much, Mr. President and members of the board. Um, you know, I uh had a conversation with the alderman from the sixteenth yesterday or the day before and I was really hopeful after that conversation about how we could talk about trust and in the idea of what we're working on together and what we can figure out. Um, and these sorts of moments are very frustrating for me at the board uh because I feel like when alderpeople have questions, it's suddenly seen as this traitorous act to have a question or to, to, to ask the questions that our constituents are asking for us to ask and I think all of our constituents are asking for us to ask and for the idea of being it's not our job to ask questions or to think things through. And, you know, I think um Alderwoman Rice spoke very well, um, sorry, Alderwoman from the eighth spoke very well about her concerns about this and her taxing district. Um, I think there's a really big difference between taxing districts that have to do with citizens choosing how they want to spend their own tax dollars and a single business deciding how they want to spend tax dollars of our citizens without any of their input. Um, and if we can't see that, if we can't think critically, then I don't know what we're doing here. Um, and with all of that said, I do think that um taking criticism and um from our uh colleagues and from people who we agree with and don't agree with is definitely part of the job too. Um, and I understand that not every decision that I make or not every decision that any other alderperson on this board makes is gonna make everyone happy, is gonna be the right thing for everyone at every different time. I just hope that at the end of the day, that respect can be what we lead with uh as well as honesty about the conversations that we're having and the thoughts that we have and concerns that our constituents share with us and that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderwoman, any further discussion, any further? Seeing no hands, Alderman from the eighth, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, um. I wasn't planning on saying anything today because we had, we had a pretty good discussion last time around um in committee about this. Um, I want to thank the alderman from the sixteenth for making a bit of a mockery of the way that we are going about our business here. Um, I do not think that there is anything um in conflict in doing my job um both in my, in my personal stances and what I've advocated for and what my constituents elected me to do um as far as reforming public safety and making sure that we're sending the right resources to the right um that we are, uh, if, if that means reallocating funds so that the person best trained to respond to a call is the person that is responding, um, that we are not overburdening our police department, asking them to be social workers um or asking them to be EMTs, um, you know, that is my, my sponsorship of this community improvement district has nothing to do um with those, those beliefs and those um, those positions on which I was elected. Um, this is a piece of my ward. Um, these constituents that I am representing today are important constituents in my ward. More than sixty-eight percent of them signed onto a petition and I have worked with them to try to gain better compliance with state statutes um and even working with them as far as understanding what public safety means to them. Because as we talked about in committee, they are moving towards more private security um officers and not secondary police officers because there is, there is an issue with staffing, there's an issue with funding. Um, and there's, there is less of a, a there, there are some other friendlier feelings that come around to the neighborhood when it's, it's just security officers and not necessarily secondary police. Um, so, we've also talked about the expansion of programming, all of those things are a part of public safety. Um, part of their public safety budget also includes room for beautification, which we know is a part of public safety, for lighting, for tree trimming, for those types of things that are all a part of this. And so, reducing all of this work and all of the things that I bring to the table as a representative of my constituent to your talking points is pretty disrespectful. So, um, I would say, um, I am, I'm grateful for your support of the bill for the residents of the Flora Place Community Improvement District. Um, this, I have always said that this is a difficult bill for me to bring. Um, as I came into politics, as I came into community in the Shaw neighborhood after the death of Von der Meiers, which was at the hands of a secondary police officer who was working for the Flora Place CID at the time. So, this is complicated and I think that it demeans our constituents to oversimplify it and reduce it to talking points. So, um, with that, Mr. President, I renew my motion to third read and finally pass Board Bill eighty-eight.
All right, thank you, Alderman, it's been moved, the second that we third read and finally pass Board Bill eighty-eight, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Iggracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Lappy.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Abstaining.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Walker.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Twenty-five aye votes and one abstain.
Thank you, Sherida, by your vote, we have third read and finally pass Board Bill eighty-eight.
Board Bill eighty-nine sponsored by Alderwoman Davis. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen, a portion authorized and directing the issuance and delivery of not tax fee four million six hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars plus issuance cost principal amount of, of tax increment and special district revenue notes of the city of St. Louis containing severability clause.
All right, Alderman from the nineteenth, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill eighty-nine.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, as was just read, uh, Board Bill eighty-nine had um unanimous approval from the Board of E and A and after much discussion
Please make a motion, ma'am, please make a motion.
I shall do that, I'd like to move to adopt Board Bill eighty-nine.
Entertaining, second?
Second.
All right, uh, it's been moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, I believe that was Alderman from the fourth at second.
Yes.
All right, please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you. Uh, after having um the approval of, of the Board of E and A with a unanimous approval of the board bill, after all the discussion and ex- and uh clarification of this um most viable project that is a part of a, a much larger effort that's taking place in the Armory uh location there. Uh, I also wanted to say that uh all of us have received a letter from the President and CEO of the St. Louis Development Corporation with uh more clarification. I believe that we've also received uh information from, because there were some mis- misunderstandings about the St. Louis Public School uh district and uh, but they have indicated that they are doing their own negotiations. They appreciate our concern, but they will handle their own business and they have no uh they are not against this project. So, it appears now that we've clarified a lot of things, with a lot of lengthy discussion, which is always good. And uh, I'm looking forward to seeing this move forward and uh uh would ask for the support of this board. Uh, and I thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Seeing no hands or any further discussion? It's been, oh, we have a hand, Alderman from the thirteenth, you are recognized.
Thank you so much, I, I really appreciate Alderman from the nineteenth, uh, giving that background. There was a letter that did come from Neil Richardson, President and CEO, that answered all of my questions. Um, number, there were seven points made in the letter. Uh, the fifth point, uh, it is no secret that we expect developers seeking incentives in the city to step up and support economic empowerment and equitable and inclusive development in ways that prior administrations did not. And then the last point, to date, SLD C is pleased with the commitments, including, and this is what I think a lot of us had concerns about, most recently, a four hundred and seventy thousand dollar financial commitment made by Green Street, some of which currently relate to confidential real estate negotiations, but are expected to lead to detailed public announcements in the near future. Um, most importantly, we believe these commitments will have a positive impact on St. Louis Public Schools and the marginalized residents of our city. So, those are the questions that I had and they were answered by this letter, so I will be a yes vote on this bill today, after I, uh, note being a no vote in perfection. I really appreciate all of the work of everyone to get this information, these are the questions I had, thank you so much for answering them, I appreciate your time.
All right. Alderman from the seventeenth, you are recognized.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Um, I'm glad that uh things are moving forward uh regarding uh the Army Board Bills eighty-nine and ninety. Um, I think that they are moving forward more quickly uh in terms of last two weeks uh regarding uh getting an equitable uh development contribution. Uh, I also, at the same time, will just point out regarding uh these board bills uh are that uh uh I, I still do believe that we should not be setting a precedent in terms of having other alderpeople um carry board bills uh in your ward, especially when the present alderperson has been working on a board bill uh prior to that all. And that uh whether uh that would continue in the uh future that uh the alderperson would have uh communications beforehand. Uh, that wasn't had uh in terms of this. Uh, I believe I'll vote present on this because of the manner in which this was uh processed and I um am happy that uh development is moving forward. Uh, there is gonna be growth in this city. Um, and all the input into this, the questions people had as people did come up to me too uh regarding this as uh the Armory, uh, this particular uh Armory uh building and project is in the seventeenth. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Seeing no hands, Alderman from the nineteenth, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, in closing, I shall say that um is unfortunate that the uh alderperson from the seventeenth ward uh chooses not to recognize that I did uh make sure that she knew beforehand I had been asked to support this bill and that after about, I, and I can always pull it up on my phone, I think we talked about twenty-eight minutes um before this was uh introduced um about the bill itself, where the concerns were and also my concern. Uh, and I, and all of you have heard me say this before, none of this belongs to you an individual. Yes, we are elected in a specific geographic area, but everything that we do represents the entire city. So, when a city department isn't, has done all that they can do and they need to get some business moving forward, we will probably see this happen again and we will probably have to legislate this as well. Uh, because we have to, we have to service the city and we have to do it um sometimes uh in a different way. And so, I am very sorry that uh uh the alderperson from the seventeenth uh currently has changed positions, this was very adamant earlier uh in this year and last year about uh uh automatic courtesy and all that stuff, it needs to be ended and, but we shall not dwell. I renew my motion.
All right, thank you, Alderman, it's been moved and seconded that we third read and finally pass Board Bill eighty-nine. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
There you go.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Iggracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice? Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Lappy?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Present.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel?
Present.
Alderman Todd?
No.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Walker?
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Ryan?
Aye.
Alderman Con?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Aldem- Alderman Grass?
Aye.
President Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus? Alderman Bosley? I'm sorry, Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Thank you. Alderwoman Rice?
Aye.
Twenty-four I votes, one no vote and two voted present.
All right, by your vote, you've, uh, third read and finally passed Board Bill eighty-nine.
Board Bill ninety sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance approving a first amendment to redevelopment agreement and CID intergovernment cooperation agreement in connection with redevelopment project area one of the Armory District Redevelopment Area and Containment Severability Clause.
All right, Alderman from the nineteenth, you were recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill number ninety.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. President and members of the board. Uh, as read and stated, Board Bill ninety refers to the, uh,
We make a motion, please, first.
Uh, I mean, I, I like to say that. I'd like to, uh, ask, uh, for favorable consideration for Board Bill ninety. I move.
Entertainer, second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-seventh, that we third read and finally passed Board Bill number ninety. All of them, please proceed.
Uh, Mr. President and members of the board, uh, this, uh, Board Bill ninety, I recognize that is the, um, CIT, uh, process for this project and, uh, I think we had good discussion on it as well. And, uh, uh, I ask for favorable consideration. Thank you.
All right, uh, Alderman from the twelfth, you were recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, recognizing that it's a bit of an odd usage of abstentions, uh, because it says concern a CIT, which again, I'm, uh, looking into our CITS with, uh, through the state auditor's recommendations and city council's office. I feel compelled to abstain from this vote as well. So, I just want to state for the record, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you all the ones. Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing no hands, Alderman from the nineteenth, you're recognized to close.
I renew my motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. We third read and finally passed Board Bill ninety. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Previous roll.
There's been a request for previous roll?
Objection.
We have objections, so Sharita, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderwoman Iggracia?
Aye.
Alderman Colder? Alderwoman Rice? I'm sorry, Alderwoman Rice, I didn't hear you. Present? Thank you. Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Lappy?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Abstained.
Alderwoman Switzer?
No.
Alderwoman Howard? I'm sorry, Alderwoman Howard, I didn't hear you. Alderwoman Green?
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel?
Present.
Alderman Todd?
No.
Alderwoman Davis?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Walker?
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Ryan?
Aye.
Alderman Con?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Grass?
Aye.
President Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus? Alderman Colder?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Twenty-one I votes, two no votes, one abstain and three voted present.
Thank you, Sharita. By your vote, we have third read and finally passed Board Bill ninety. Report of engrossment.
Board Bill seventy-one, seventy-two, sixty-two, eighty-eight, eighty-nine and ninety.
All other business being suspended, the President will in open session affix their signature here to, to the end that these may become law. All right, Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized on our courtesy resolutions calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar.
Entertainer, second?
Second, second.
All right, it's moved by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, seconded by Alderman from the fourteenth, that we approve our courtesy resolutions calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution one twenty-two sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, recommending the city of St. Louis Port Authority provide personal property tax abatement and a sales tax exemption construction material for the Procter and Gamble Manufacturing Company.
All right, over for the second, you were recognized with the first reading of resolution one-two-two. Alderman from the second?
I couldn't get a, um, unmute. Um, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Um, I would like to request that, um, resolution one-two-two go to the TNC committee.
All right. Sharita, please make note of that.
Uh, President Ballmer, we need a second.
Uh, I'm sorry about that.
Second.
And the second was?
Second.
Okay, so moved by Alderman from the second, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-sixth, uh, that we take resolution one-two-two to TNC, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Second reading of resolutions reported committees.
We have none.
Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Wednesday, October twenty-sixth, Streets will have a meet at, uh, committee hearing at ten AM via webinar. Public Safety will have a hearing at one PM via webinar. Thursday, October twenty-seventh, HUD's Committee will meet at nine AM via web- webinar and Friday, October twenty-eighth, full board meeting, ten AM via webinar. That's the extent of the announcements.
All right, any further announcements? Any further announcements? No hands? If I may take a moment then, though, to wish my lovely wife, Susan, today is our thirty-third wedding anniversary. She's been putting up with me for much longer than that, so thank you, Suzie, wherever you are.
Lord Jesus, I hand it up. Alderwoman Keys has her hand up.
Oh, thank, thank you, Mr. President.
Alderman, okay, Alderman, uh, please wait to be recognized.
Oh, sure, thank you.
Alderwoman Rice, from the eighth, you're recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. President and members of the board. I would like to wish the Honorable Alderman from the eighteenth, Mr. Jesse Todd, a very happy birthday. Um, his birthday was yesterday, I believe. He's off camera hiding from us at the moment, but, um, please, everyone, give Mr. Jesse Todd a very happy birthday. Hopefully, he can perform a hundred push-ups for us in person at our next meeting. Thank you so much.
Okay, happy birthday, Alderman. All right, Alderman from the seventeenth, you're recognized.
Great, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I just want to announce a, uh, public forum that's going to be happening. Uh, it is, uh, sponsored and hosted by the, uh, American Federation of Teachers. It will be next Monday, October twenty-fourth, from six-thirty to eight o'clock, uh, at Addis Elementary School and the topic's going to be regarding tax incentives. Uh, the American Federation of Teachers has brought in an expert from DC who has been looking at, uh, tax incentives all over the country, uh, and has been doing for over twenty or thirty years. He started it during the Carter administration, his research. So, everybody is welcome. Uh, there's going to be free childcare and refreshments and it's a community-based meeting. Thank you.
Thank you all the ones. Alderman from the twenty-first, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Uh, for some reason, I can't get my hand raised. Wait, Norman and I are here.
Bend your elbow, bend your elbow.
Okay. Again, thank you. So, I just wanted, uh, to, um, announce that I'm having my first town hall meeting tomorrow at the O'Fallon Rec Center on West Florissant. Um, and, uh, residents and people in the area can pop in. Athena will be there, uh, providing free flu shots as well as COVID-nineteen, um, booster shots. So, we're looking forward to having a great meeting and would love to see some of you there.
All right, thank you all the ones. Any further announcements? Any further announcements?
What time is that town hall meeting?
I am so sorry, it is at ten AM.
Okay, let's not jump in here. Order, order. All right.
Uh,
Alderman from the twenty-seventh, your hand, your hands raised, please, you're recognized. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to announce, uh, tomorrow also, the twenty-seventh ward will have their last meeting of the year because we start preparing for the holidays and so it'll be at fifty-eight, sixty-eight, West Florissant City Hope Bible Church. And it'll be at ten AM and, uh, our guest speaker will be Merritt Tashaw Jones.
All right, thank you all the ones. Alderman from the seventeenth, you're recognized for the second time.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Um, there is going to be a rally, uh, walk for domestic violence in, uh, the seventeenth ward at ten o'clock and Shemene Clark, our Alderwoman, uh, Clark Hubbard announced that and I just wanted just to reiterate the importance of this walk, uh, and would like you to come out for it. So, it's at ten o'clock. Again,, uh, Diamond Divas is putting it on and that is for domestic violence and it's important to show our support, uh, regarding that.
All right, thank you very much. Alderman from the thirteenth, you're recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I wanted to let everyone know that the Open Space Council, as well as St. Louis County Parks, are hosting a cleanup of River to Pair, uh, tomorrow morning. That's at nine AM, meeting at Foltz Baseball Field. So, just right on, uh, the other side of the line there and, um, be cleaning up River to Pair, which I think we all are interested in making sure there's less trash in our waterways. So, hope to see some of you all there. Bye.
All right, enjoy the fishing out there tomorrow. All right, Alderman from the fourth, you're recognized.
Thank you, uh, uh, off, uh, chair and members of the board. I am just so excited. Uh, it's an announcement, uh, that my niece just received her wings as a flight attendant. I've been watching off and on, uh, as they streamed it live and it happened to be during the same time as our board meeting, so, um, I'm just excited for her.
Oh, congratulations.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Don't family members fly free? All right, Alderman twenty-first, you're recognized for the second time.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I just, uh, remembered, uh, once again, and I'm so excited. Uh, my son and his wife, uh, announced yesterday, or day before yesterday, that they are expecting their second baby and so I'm getting ready to be a granny again, times two, hopefully three. So, I'm hoping for twins.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, any further announcements? Any further announcements? Don't forget today's picture day from noon till three down at these, uh, our chambers. So, put on your pretty clothes and go down. All right, Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized on the motion to excuse. Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you still with us?
I am. Uh, having difficulty getting my, getting these buttons to show up here. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I move that we excuse the Alderwoman from the first ward for necessary absence.
Entertainer, second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. I caught the second Alderman from the eighth, that we excuse the Alderman from the first for necessary absence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, opposed? Motion carries. Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adjourn until Friday, October twenty-eighth at ten AM via webinar.
Second.
Right. Okay, it's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Was that the Alderman from the eighth that seconded? Uh, we should adjourn to October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. All those in favor, I'm tired of the letter aye. All those in favor signify by saying jay.
Jay!
Aye.
IJ.
All right.
IJ.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. We will adjourn to October twenty-eighth. Thank you very much. Say goodbye to the goose.
Bye.
Good day, everybody. Have a safe day.
Everybody, please be safe.
Yes, yes.